I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take the roll call, please.
Trustee Spurling, here. Trustee Lee. Trustee Heinz. Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
And trustee Bond.
Here.
Now ask if you have any nominations for mayor pro tem, president pro tem.
I move to appoint trustee Bond as president pro tem.
Second.
Third. Take the roll call.
Okay. Trustee Spurling, yes. Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
And trustee Bond.
Yes.
Don't mess this up. Keep it short.
Why did he just pull out a whole nother agenda?
We'll be... Good evening. We'll begin with our two-minute public comments portion of the agenda. Do we have any members of the public who would like to speak? Please sign in. I think you have already.
Sorry, I'm kinda tall. My name's Steven Lindstrom. I live at 600 block of Kimberly Lane, 652. Try and keep this as quick as possible. Basically what it is, is the property there. It's just out of control. I'll kinda read what I have written. I've spoken with the property owner and neighborhood standards here at the village. It's not helped. The... No answer from the property owner and the neighborhood standards here. Keeps saying that they know they're gonna get something done, that they're gonna find this and that. They keep saying things, but nothing's getting done. And the guy says, "Oh yeah, we know about it. We're doing something. We're doing something." But nothing's getting done. So the neighborhood standards, if you're gonna refer it to them, that's gonna do nothing because they're gonna keep saying that they know, but nothing gets done. And they know the violations are there. Real quickly, the violations, I mean, there's garbage and trash everywhere. The dumpster's overflowing. I didn't pre-signups, but I have picks if you need them. There, it's attracting vermin, bugs, animals. There's weeds and overgrowth everywhere, birds' nests, you know, all over the soffits and that. There's rotted, eroded boards on the bottom of the structures that bugs are coming in through that. Parking lot, the cement's all deteriorated. It's a mess. There was a brick wall in the back by the dumpster that had rotted, I don't know how many decades ago. And what the property owner tried to do is take that and put it in the holes. He's got, so literally the parking lot has brick, old brick wall in the holes instead of fixing the holes in the parking lot. Again, there was a... Oh, yeah, the holes were filled with the brick. Tenants are keeping grills up against the actual structures to use. The biggest issue is the walls between the units. I'm here, I live in one of the units, and my buddy here lives in one of the units as well. And we keep our units in the property real nice around the units, which we're the only two that do. But the biggest issue is that the walls between the units, it's sheet rock studs and sheet rock. Now, when I talked with the guy from the neighborhood standard, he goes, "Well, it's grandfathered in." I checked on that. Illinois, state Illinois, has a law that says safety issues cannot be grandfathered in, that they have to be resolved if it's a safety issue with tenants, buildings of that nature. So then we go on to, when I talk with Public Works, they said, "Oh, it's grandfathered in." Well, that also, Illinois has another separate law. Even if that law didn't apply, there's been transfer of ownership. It says when transfer of ownership happens, everything has to be brought up to current code. That's not happened. And one of the main reasons for that is fire safety. And right now, we have a big fire hazard over there. So that's a problem. Biggest issues overall, the dumpster's overflowing. It's, like I say, attracting animals. There's trash everywhere, weeds, overgrowth. Fire safety in the units is a huge problem. The cooking oils and things used by some of the tenants, they kinda seep throughout the entire buildings. And then I don't, so you're having problems with the smell and the issue of fire safety again. So the biggest issue again is fire safety, and it's been referred to the property owner. It's been referred to the neighborhood standards people. And the neighborhood standards people, well, the one, the main guy, the, I don't know his name, glasses, dark-haired guy, he tried to say that it was grandfathered in. When I looked that up, that wasn't the case. And then the other gentleman, he says, "Yeah, we know. It's a violation. We know about it. We know about it. We're gonna fix it." But this has been years now, and nothing's been done. So they know about it, and they're gonna get it done, and they're gonna find him, but none of that has happened.
We're pretty close to the two-minute point. Does the village have your contact information?
It does. Well, I left it right here on this.
Okay. Can we arrange for someone to follow up with this gentleman?
Can I just, one more quick comment. Been a longtime resident of Montgomery, like the community, care about the people, love living in the community. And it's really become a quality of life issue. And, you know, like I say, it's, that property and the one next to it, which has nothing to do with me, but it's become an eyesore and a bit of a nuisance. And it's just, it needs some attention. And the neighborhood standards hasn't done what they need to do, or I'm forcing the codes. They're on file.
I'm confident.
I appreciate y'all's time.
What was the address again?
650, 652, and 654 Kimberly. There's three buildings there. And then the other ones are on the corner of Park and... Park and Kimberly, but I don't live there, but those are a rep too. But the 650, 652, and 654 are the ones that I live in.
Thanks for coming. Yes.
Just a quick follow-up on what Steve said. Everything he said, that's why I'm here to also. And I moved in here in 2011. And Dan, the guy that owns the place, has been promising from day one that he's gonna take care of all this stuff. And here we are, what, six, seven years later? Nothing's been done. So the reason we're here is to try to see if we can get something done. We've tried to do it nicely, tried to, you know, work with him. In fact, if we weren't in there, the place would be worse than it is. We take care of the property for him. He, he used to come around because he would collect the checks for rent, but he don't even do that anymore. He has the people mailing the checks, and he just don't come around. I mean, we text him, we call him, and he still doesn't show up, you know? So that's why we're here, basically, to see if we can get something done. Or if somebody says something to him from here, maybe that'll make him, you know, wanna do something. But, so... I'm Mark Brackett. I live in, I live at the apartments also.
Mark, please be sure to sign in as well.
I did already.
Perfect. The village will follow up with both of you.
Okay.
The biggest thing is neighborhood standards just hasn't done anything. They haven't, they say they would do certain laws, those aren't grandfathered laws.
Thank you both. Montgomery Fire Chief Myers has asked for sign.
Good evening, members of the village board. I realize the TIF rebate is not on the agenda tonight, but if there's any discussion further in the meeting, I'd like to participate in that discussion. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
I think that's the shortest the chief has ever spoken. Just FYI, but...
He could go along.
Don't bait him.
Yeah, I'm not trying to bait you.
That being said, let's move on to the consent agenda. We have in the consent agenda minutes of the village board meeting of June 26, 2017, executive session minutes of June 26, 2017, accounts receivable report for June 2017, accounts payable through July 6, 2017, in the amount of $1,016,622.82, and cancellation of the July 18, 2017 Committee of the Whole Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Do I call you now? Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
And trustee Heinz. Thank you.
Very good. Motion passed. Thank you. Under items for separate action, we have, our first item is the Public Works Department two-way radio system purchase. Director Huppenstadt, would you care to address that issue?
Yes. Thank you. Sorry, I'm just trying to get to my place here.
We're going faster than expected, aren't we?
Yeah, I'm... It's no excuse. Before you tonight is an agenda item for consideration for a two-way radio system to be reinstalled in the Public Works fleet. Going back some years, from what I understand, it was about 2006 when Public Works moved away from two-way radios. I've been kinda unable to put a finger on the exact cause. There's been some speculation that it had to do with the narrow banding requirement, but that wasn't until about 2012. So the years aren't totally jiving for me. So I'm not sure if that's, in fact, the reason why Public Works moved away from it. But at that point in time, they were utilizing push-to-tech, push-to-talk technology available through Nextel, and then later on through Sprint. And while that technology was getting them by, it never quite replaced the two-way radio network. Now, push-to-talk is no longer available to us. The guys do carry cell phones, and that's a much-needed technology in Public Works as well. However, there are certain things that can't be done as efficiently with a telephone that can be done with a two-way radio system. So going through the budget process over the past two years, we've finally gotten into the budget, a sum of $38,750 to rebuild the radio system. I'm recommending we proceed by approving Concept Wireless Communications. Their proposal is just shy of $32,000, which is well under the budget amount. And I believe we can shave even more off of that cost based on some investigation that we did just last Friday. Some of the components of the prior system are still viable and can be reused. So we will try and reuse what is available to us, but for the majority of the equipment, will all have to be replaced, reinstalled in newer trucks. I mean, we don't even have the trucks that we had 11 years ago in many cases. This will improve our ability to communicate both with our administrative assistant here at the village hall, the supervisors, and myself, and then the rank and file in the field to get things done a little more efficiently. And its biggest benefit is during things like snow operations where we can communicate with 14 trucks in one voice. Tonight, I'm seeking your approval to approve the proposal put forth by Concept Wireless Communications in the total amount of $31,649.30. And as I said, I think we can shave quite a bit off of that yet.
I have a question.
Sure.
I've noticed doing police ride-alongs that they've got two-way radios in the police squads as well. Is there any sort of channel where the police can communicate with Public Works?
Historically, there had been a channel, and in many communities, that is the case. In this arrangement, I'm not sure that we will be able to maintain that. As you can see, the next proposal in line is about $10,000 difference. And certainly, if we went with that proposal, we could maintain that feature. But in order to kinda keep costs down, I'm recommending the proposal through Concept Wireless, the use of Kenwood radios. And it's just a totally dedicated channel. The police use Motorola radios, which are kinda number one in the industry, but Kenwood is a close second, and I think it's adequate for what we need. So the, for the, for the times when that ability to talk amongst us would be beneficial, I'm not sure that the benefit outweighs the cost. I think we can pick up a phone and call KenCom just as easily for those. That's just my feedback.
So in chat, and doing a little digging, I'm sorry.
Do you agree, chief?
Yeah, the first time I saw this was today, so I haven't been able to go through it totally. If, if you mean talking from car to truck.
Yeah, from PD to Public Works.
Yeah, we, we have, we own 154.0.040 as a frequency that Public Works used in the, in the past. So without going through this proposal, I won't, won't be able to answer that.
Okay. I was just seeing if the option was available and if that was something that you guys wanted to...
I can inquire further. I didn't realize that that frequency had been utilized by Public Works as well. I knew you had some additional frequencies, but as I understood it, the Public Works frequency had expired. So we'd have to initiate a new one anyhow and get approval for that. I can inquire further. I'm not sure that that...
Just, just to check.
At the most cost-effective proposal, I'm not sure that we can do that, but I will, I will inquire.
And then my next, my question is, are these handheld radios? Are these in the truck or a combination of both?
It's a combination of both. The majority of them are what they call mobile radios, which is a little deceiving because they're physically attached in the truck. They're mobile in the sense that they go with the truck, but they are built in. And then there are four handheld radios in this proposal as well. Those are the kind that you can clip on your waist and carry around. And that's something that can be used for...
For like Montgomery Fest and that sort of stuff?
Montgomery Fest for flagging. When we do flagging operations and we close a lane of the road, it's important to have that communication between the two ends. So that, certainly.
Other discussion?
My questions were answered.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
I'm sorry. I thought Todd was going to do additional research.
Yeah.
Why would we be approving it?
Well, I, depending on what the board wants, I'll, I'll give approval on the emotion pending...
Is that a deal breaker, I guess, would be the question.
No. My, my question to, for Todd and for the chief was, if that makes sense, as a board member, I was willing to spend a little bit more money if they felt that that communication was worth it. If they don't feel that that communication's worth it, or if there's a possibility that that may exist with the frequency that the chief already has, I'm, I'm willing to go ahead and approve the proposal.
Concept Wireless. You're good with that.
Correct, correct.
I have an additional question. Are these, I noticed in the proposal that they possibly have a GPS functionality?
Some of these radios have technologies that will not be employed at the onset. We could always add to that later. But in its simplest form, two-way radios is what I'm seeking to add to our fleet. So that's something that we could, we could certainly entertain and move forward with in the future. I don't know that we necessarily need it at this point.
Okay. And I, it looks like the FCC licensing application is $1,575, so I would love to see us investigate the brand with, that we already own.
I'll get with the chief and with the vendor and see if that's something we can work towards.
I, I keep track of the frequencies. I don't believe it's expired.
Okay.
If it did, that slipped by me, but I'll check.
What's the wish of the board then?
I would say table until... We, get an answer?
I would say, yeah, let's, I'd like you to do a little more of that research and maybe let us know.
I think there was no second to the motion, so it dies, and we accept a new motion.
I move to table it. Then do we have to move to, I move to table it.
I think so.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next is ordinance 1775, creating a Class Q liquor license. The first reading. Defer to Police Chief Myers.
I'll defer to the village attorney.
Very good.
Okay, so this draft, the first ordinance, they go together in conjunction. The first ordinance is the creation of a Class Q liquor license, which is per the request of the Fox Valley Park District. And as drafted currently, this would allow for the sale of beer and wine on the premises. It would be from one of the concession stands as well as a mobile cart at the Stewart complex. There's certain parameters that were drafted in the ordinance with regard to, you can only sell it by the glass or by the can. A prohibition on, on actual glass, so it would be in plastic cups or in cans. Nothing with caps or anything that could break to just kind of prevent some of the issues that arise with the service of alcoholic beverages in some cases. There was some additional information missing, which would be the cost of the license, which I would ask the board to provide me with feedback as to what you would want that amount, as well as anything else in there. If you want to see something different, or if there was something that you wanted removed. But this was based on the parameters of what the park district had provided us, that they would like to see their license look like. So this is just, again, a first reading, and I would welcome any feedback or comments. And then the second I'll just discuss is just actually granting the license to the Fox Valley Park District.
Does there have to be a fee amount, or should there be like a $10 fee amount? Should there be some amount there, or can it be zero?
There should be at least a nominal amount, unless the board wanted to waive that amount, but for purposes of consistency with the other licenses, I would suggest at least having some amount for the license. I was thinking $10 just as a courtesy, because they, we do a lot of back and forth with them.
Do we have any data with other, because I know he mentioned that they're competing against other venues. And this is an annual fee, because I know we waived, I think, don't we have a $100 application fee for a temporary?
Temporary license.
And we waived that consistently for them. So I would think, I would like to just kinda get an idea of what, what is one of these for other areas? Because it is for the, it's for the whole year.
I mean, are their licenses range from, what, 500 to 1,500?
Correct.
Yeah. So, I mean, even if it was at 100, I'm with you with the nominal fee, but 100 seems reasonable to me.
Yeah, certainly not.
It's not a deal breaker to them, nor, you know, and again, it is for the year. I do have a question for the attorney regarding, "Any alcohol sold pursuant to this provision must be sold in single-serving containers, by the can for beer or glass of wine." Now, I know when you go on a golf course, you can buy a 12-pack to go in a little tote, baggie with ice in it. And I would anticipate this would be something that would happen there, because the soccer field is three fields away. Does this prohibit that?
This would prohibit the sale of, yes, of package or of a group. I mean, yes, you would be buying it by either the glass of beer or the glass of wine. You would not be buying, you know, a six-pack or 12-pack.
But on, on a golf course, when they give you a little baggie thing, they're individual cans in the bag, right? And so can I go up and say I want six cans of beer, as long as they're individual cans?
That would, I mean, I don't know what the parameters on how they would be serving. I mean, a lot of places will only sell one beverage per person. I think that's standard. And that's something I don't think that we've discussed with them, and I'm not sure if that was something that they were looking for, but we can find out.
Because I, I know where you were headed with that, and I'd, yeah.
Yeah, because I, I mean, because, because they sell you the tote, which is less money than per can, and you get a, you know, you get a little bit of a discount, yeah, bulk discount, it's like Sam's Club. And then you can take it off to the field or whatever. So I'm not sure, I'm a little concerned about that end of it. And how, I also, because chief, you weren't here when this was brought up originally. What is the PD's feelings about? Do we have a concern? Is there an issue over there?
No, no, we've discussed it at Wednesday morning staff, and I'm fine with that.
Okay.
All right, I've heard two different amounts thrown out. Do we have a consensus on?
And the, the amount, whatever amount that we would be talking about, would we waive that for the park district?
No, they would pay that since it's...
Because this is an actual, like, for the whole year.
Temporary license we waive, but if it's a real license, then we would have them to pay whatever fee it is.
And the two totals that you're hearing are $10 and $100?
Yes. Those are the two numbers I heard.
Let the record reflect, trustee Youngerman is speechless.
That keeps me out of trouble that way.
Do we have a number in mind?
I'm, I'm fine with 100.
Trustee Marisack's in for 100.
I mean, I was, just because, again, it's, 10 seems like a bother, and we do charge 100 for a temporary. So it is our lowest class liquor license currently. We'd be consistent with staying in line.
Trustee Spurling?
I'm okay with the 100. I was just trying to keep it low as a courtesy because they, we kind of go back and forth with courtesies to them, so.
Trustee Heinz, 100?
Do the 100. Now, what about the, being able to buy multiple? Is that something we need to address in there?
Yeah, I can, if that's something that the park district was looking for, and I don't think they indicated one way or the other in their outline. But if that is something that they would like, what would the direction then be as to incorporating that?
It was just a question that I was asking, because the language kind of implies single cans, but I know that when you go, you can buy a single cans and, you know, they're just, they just take them out of the case.
Yeah, it may not even be that. It's like, Doug and I are at a baseball game or a soccer game or something. Hey, Doug, I'm gonna go get us a couple beers. Do we each have to walk over there? Are we only getting one, or can I get two and give him one, and so?
Yeah, I don't, it's a non-issue for me. It really isn't. I just, I wanted to point it out and bring it up that, you know, it may sound this way, but the reality is, a case of beer is 24 individual cans. You can still buy it.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm saying that I'm okay with them going up and getting two or three beers if they're walking back over and, and you've got two or three buddies that you're watching a soccer game with.
We'll confirm what their intent is, and we can report back.
And the intention is these would be distributed in a golf cart-type atmosphere?
Either a golf cart or at the concession stand.
Yeah, I believe they wanted one of the concession stands to sell it, and then the possibility of a few mobile carts that would circulate the premises as well.
My thought on it would be two beers at a time and not anything like a six-pack.
Well, like I said, we'll confirm what their, what their intentions are. Are there any issues with putting these two ordinances on consent for the next meeting?
No. Okay.
We've concluded our work under separate action then. Items for discussion. Our first topic is National Night Out.
Yes, thank you. I have the list tonight with, I need your shirt sizes if we're gonna proceed the same as we did last year. So if anybody has a change, please let me know. Other than that, we're playing on our, our usual schedule where we visit the neighborhood, so, thank you.
Do we know that date offhand?
August 1st, I believe.
August 1?
And I know that there was talk last year, at least that our, our group that was there, I think it's Briar Cliff and...
Red Fox?
Thank you. It was like two people there. And it's been that way the three years that I've been there.
Sure, we can...
So it was just, it was a topic that doesn't seem like there's a lot of kids in that hub. If, and I know that that one also involves the Swigle Fire District, so...
I, I think they go to that stop because the playground's there, thinking that the families would come. But, yeah, you and I were there together at one, one of the years, yeah.
Nothing happens?
Nothing.
All right, we'll, we'll reevaluate that stop. And it is August 1st. It's National Night Out.
Shall we move to the next and last topic, which is preventative sealer use?
Engineer, engineer Wallers.
Do we get a PowerPoint?
No PowerPoint. I'll try to be brief. So as we've expanded the road program, we've also tried to expand our use of preventive maintenance products to try to extend the life of our pavements. And this year, we had the opportunity to participate in a multi-jurisdictional bid for the use of a product called Reclamite, which is a product that's used on streets that are relatively new, zero to five years. And when applied, and really, the sooner the better, so like a couple of years into it. But it, it's a product that then helps protect and rejuvenate the surface and extend the life of that product. So we went into this to try to just test the water, to see what kind of bid prices we would get. And we feel like we've gotten some good prices. As you'll, if you look through the information, you can see we're kind of on the lower end of the spectrum in terms of square yards. For example, Elmhurst bid 187,000 square yards. We're bidding, we bid about 22,000. So we think it's a good opportunity for us to be able to use this product and, on a street that we can evaluate over time, see how it performs. We're getting the benefit of the economies of scale of the larger users in this bid group. We're not any, under any obligation to accept a bid, but we do think, again, it's a good opportunity for us to get into the preventative sealer market and test it out on a, on a street that gets a fair amount of traffic volume in the village. So we didn't want to proceed without getting consensus from the board that it was acceptable to you. It's going to be funded out of the, what we call the Infrastructure Road Program. The funds are available, so we can, we can manage the, the cost. So again, we think it's a worthwhile investment. There's quite a few agencies that are now using it pretty routinely. Kane County and... and you may have noticed in the document, you know, Peoria, Lombard, just, just a host of communities. And I can get a more complete listing, but, um, it's, it's starting to be more and more accepted, and, again, we think it's a good opportunity for us, so, that's what we're looking for this evening, is just a consensus that it's okay to proceed with that participation.
Could you explain to the board about the notification process and also about what it will look like?
So, um, there were several options in the bid where you could just get the, the base bid, which is basically the product sealer. The material is liquid when it goes down, and it takes a little while for it to set up, so, before it's set, uh, they place some limestone chips on it to just blotter it up a little bit to keep it from tracking. Um, and after it's cured out, then some of the chips will go to the side of the road, for example. So, we've elected to get the sweeping as well, so that they will place it, sweep it, and then also because we think, uh, that, you know, obviously, whenever you do anything of this scale in terms of road miles, that you'll get a lot of interest. And so, we've also elected to have the, um, company do the notification of the residents so that they'd be aware of it.
Is this what Kane County did at thirty in Orchard on the north side at thirty?
I don't think so. Um, I'd have to double-check with them. I think that was a different product, but I'm not sure.
Same type of idea, though?
It's the same type of idea, but I think that had a little heavier aggregate than I think that we're going to see.
And this includes cleanup?
Yes.
Because they left that for weeks, and, and basically until it dissipated.
Right, yeah, that was, I think, I'll find out what product that was, but I believe it was different than this one.
How long would these chips be down?
It's about a month.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Because they were down for weeks.
Yeah, like I said, I do-
It shouldn't be more than four, you know, they, they kept it put down, and their, their plan is to come back and sweep it.
The, because I know we're going to get questions on this, the chemicals that they're putting down, if they get on vehicles, are they going to hurt this chemical? Is it going to hurt the vehicle? Is it going to stain the vehicle?
It's water soluble. If it gets on an asphalt-
If it gets on an asphalt driveway because it was tracked by your car, then it's actually doing some benefit to your asphalt driveway. Uh, if it gets on the concrete sidewalk or a concrete garage floor, it's water soluble, it'll clean up, or it'll just fade over about the course of a week, is what I'm told by the, the contractor.
When, when we looked at our infrastructure roadway improvements for two thousand and seventeen, was this part of that?
No.
Okay.
This is unbudgeted money, correct?
It is, yes.
But, and again, I talked, I called Todd and asked some questions earlier today. It's imperative that this be done within the first couple of years, and we recent, when did we resurface Briar Cliff? Last?
Last year.
Last year.
Just, there's a number of these products out in the marketplace now, and we've, um, some of the ones we've used, for example, is this, one other one that we've used on our bike paths is a, a Gilsonite product, GSP eighty-eight. All of these products have not been approved by IDOT yet, so, and that's not uncommon for them to lag the industry a bit. Well, last year, if you recall, we did both a combined MFT and Infrastructure Road Program funding project, and then we're obliged to only use state-approved materials when we meld our funds. So, we didn't have the opportunity last year to include it because it's not permitted. Um, in the future, I think what we're going to discuss is allocation of a certain amount of our funds to do some of the prevent, preventive work. We're trying to be selective of where we apply it so that we're using it correctly and making sure that it fits the product, you know, performance, give it a, a good chance to succeed. So, yeah, it wasn't included last year, but there were some limitations on funding.
And you wouldn't typically apply it when you laid the asphalt, it would be-
Probably wait at least one year.
One year prior to, and this is also one of the two products that we were testing. I understand we only tested one so far.
Right, well, we also tested the other one, the, the CRF product, which is more of a, uh, used on older roads. So, we're starting now, Todd and I are starting to look for what we think would be a candidate to try that product out on a little bit larger scale, and so, hopefully, when we bring discussion on next year's program, before you will have some ideas of where we might be able to employ it. We still may not include it in our base IRP contract because it would be a subcontractor to a lot of asphalt companies, and we don't want to pay the markup, so we still may go to this type of multi-jurisdictional bid participation in the future.
And Briar Cliff is a great choice because it's a, what I would deem a, a medium-traffic road, not a high-traffic, but yet it's not a side-street either, it's a true fairer, okay.
How will this affect, because I pay attention to what you tell me in, in all of these PowerPoints, how will this affect the, if we're now on a twenty-two-year cycle, and how will this affect the pavement condition index?
What it should do is it should flatten the curve, so it should take longer for, for us to start seeing that deterioration. There's other factors in, in that equation, but that's the, you know, that's the short answer, is it should, it should flatten the curve out and extend the life of the roadway before we have to go to another resurfacing.
See, I do pay attention during those PowerPoints.
Are you done?
Any further discussion?
Yes. Uh, Todd, the testing that we did do on Briar Cliff that day that I saw the whole group out there, so that was that other product that you were referencing?
That was the same product.
That was this product that we're talking about?
We lined up two free demos with the company. One of them's been completed, that's the one that you observed on the day of application. With the free demo, they treated a fifty-foot stretch of one lane of road. So, it's a good sample, um, to see how that product holds up over time. However, once we got to talking about the true costs, uh, that's when I came back and started talking with Pete and Jeff and, and discussing that this might be an opportunity for us to test that entire road segment. If in fact, and I, I believe this is more than, some people refer to it as like snake oil, but if you look at some of the agencies locally that are using this year after year after year, there's got to be some scientific proof that they're seeing results, or they wouldn't continue to spend their money. So, if in fact, we see those results, will we then be kicking ourselves that we only did fifty feet?
Right.
Versus the entire road segment? So, that's kind of where the discussion evolved from, and we were able to get in on this multi-jurisdictional bid kind of at the last minute and add our name to it. Again, there's no obligation to us, we can withdraw, but the price is pretty competitive, so, with the, with the reserve monies we have in IRP, I think even unbudgeted, it's worth our, our effort to try this.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? There's no action to be taken on that item?
Just like get a consensus, make sure the board's okay with us moving forward with that.
I'm okay with it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
On them to new or unfinished business.
I have two items. First one I wanted to mention, Saturday, July twenty-second, the Rotary Club and anyone else who would like to participate will be touching up the road, or the street painting out front of the Montgomery in Motion symbol. And if you are interested in helping out, please show up at eight AM. We would love to have you come out, it's a community event, and again, hopefully, it won't take us as long because we're just doing touch-ups. And again, thank you to Pete, Mr. Wallers, who's in charge of it.
Wear your painting clothes?
Yes, wear your painting clothes, and we have enough supplies, right? The, we're good with that.
Yeah, so there's very, very little-
Okay.
It is painted, so it's not too bad.
Yeah. The other item is the flag behind me. We, uh, the board member sponsored a flag at the Healing Field when we had the moving wall. What are you pointing at?
And Penny?
She's part of the board. The entire board sponsored the flag at the Healing Field for the moving wall, the Vietnam Moving Wall. Totally made me lose my train of thought, Doug. Anyway, the flag is here, I'm presenting to the village, it is ours, and I do thank Trustee Marisack, he actually picked up a couple of the flags that different organizations that I belong to had sponsored, so thank you for picking that up for us.
Excellent. Anything else? Wow, we are going to set a record. All right, hearing no other new or unfinished business, we'll move to future meetings. The Beautification Committee meeting for July has been canceled because we just finished our judging, a floral award, uh, program, and I think we had forty-four entries and a good evening of judging. Historic Preservation Commission will meet on Monday, July twenty-seventeenth, I'm sorry, Monday, July seventeenth at six-thirty. Intergovernmental Committee will meet Monday, July twenty-fourth at six PM. The next Village Board meeting will be Monday, July twenty-fourth at seven PM, and the Plan Commission will meet Thursday, August third at seven PM. I believe there's no need for an executive session?
Dan, one other item?
Of course.
Montgomery's Got Talent auditions?
Yes, this weekend, Saturday, beginning at, I think, ten o'clock.
I don't remember what time.
The public is welcome to attend those auditions, and there might still be an opportunity to audition for the, um, these essentially would determine who takes the stage during the Montgomery's Got Talent, uh, Talent Show Program on Saturday at noon on Montgomery Fest weekend. Thank you. So, then we'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Heinz?
Aye.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Aye.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
And Trustee Spurley?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.